I'd like to officially open the RPC meeting for the Champaign County Regional Planning Commission. If we could have a roll call, please.
Hi, Iswuel. Charles Smith.
Here.
Katina Wiltshire.
Yeah.
Tamain Philling Bogus. Stephen Summers.
Here.
Jim McWire.
Here.
Richard Hilton.
Here.
Diane Marlin.
Here.
Dennis Roberts.
Here.
DeFrank Finan.
Here.
Patricia Avery.
Good morning.
Patrick Brand. We have a call.
Thank you. I need a motion for approval of the agenda, please.
So moved. Second.
Do you do a, hey, just a, how do you ask for your vote here?
I'm sorry?
You want to do just an at-large vote? All in favor?
All in favor.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there any audience participation? Okay, now we'll move to the minutes. Any questions about the minutes? Any comments? Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of last meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. Our next item is the RPC draft meeting minutes for August 24th. And then the consolidated financial report, Elizabeth.
So each of you received the consolidated financial report. Our fund balance as of September 30th was 10.9 million, so it remains very healthy. That was an increase from August, which was 9.9 million. It represents over a million dollars in past overdue receivables from the state of Illinois, mostly for the preschool for all and the workforce programs, so we're really pleased with that. Our receivables for all of our funds were 716,000 in September, as opposed to 1.35 in August. So again, we're very pleased that we finally got reimbursement from the state, so we hope that continues.
Request approval and place on file.
Yes, okay. Motion to approve?
So moved.
You tell us my first name, so.
I'll second it. Yes.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, board. Item six now is a list of bills, Elizabeth.
Sure. So the list of bills is very typical for September. It's the start of the, at least the head start school year, lots more workforce activity, more students enrolled at Parkland and other training programs. We've had large increases in rental and utility payments because of the LIHE program and also weatherization. We're doing a lot more. So I think, you know, this is not unusual for this time of year, and there's nothing unusual to report.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry. Item seven is action items. The first one is employee health insurance, Elizabeth.
So Champaign County will again, and we're part of Champaign County's health insurance plan, they're going to continue again to offer a Blue Cross Blue Shield Illinois PPO 2000 plan in FY '19. The premium rates will begin January of '19, and the single premium coverage will increase 2%. So that total premium is 804 per month with a $2,000 in-network deductible and a $4,000 out-of-network. We thought 2% was a reasonable increase, given the environment and the history and the claims history, particularly of the county. So with regard to the employer-employee split for non-bargaining, we're recommending that the employer portion remain at 75% or $602 a month, which is a modest increase, but that the employee portion remain the same at 202 per month, which is for single coverage. The bargaining unit, that's governed by the APSME contract, the employees pay $60 a month and the employer 744. So we're trying to bridge that gap a little bit for our non-bargaining employees and also provide some equity with our external municipal government. So I request approval of the attached health insurance contribution rates for FY '19, and this is included in the budget document that will be again forwarded for final approval in November.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
With approval?
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? They're not passed. Item B, chairman policy update.
Sure. So you have attached our existing purchasing policy, and in route I've highlighted the changes. So in June of 2018, the Office of Management and Budget issued some statutory changes to the micropurchasing policy for federal grant recipients, which we are. They increased those simplified acquisition thresholds and the small purchase from 3,500 on micropurchases to $10,000, and the simplified acquisition from 150 to 250, with the idea that this will create more efficiencies but still retain competition and pricing. So these thresholds were, are applicable to us. That said, those organizations like us that receive federal funding under these higher thresholds, we have to go with the more restrictive policy. So Champaign County continues to maintain a lower threshold of $5,000 for purchase orders and $30,000 for bids, which is under state statute. So I ask that we increase the micropurchasing amount from 35 to 5, and our bid amount will stay the same. So we'll go with the more restrictive policy. So I just wanted to make this change to reflect more consistency with the federal guidelines. We're hoping that the county changes there. Thought about the $5,000 purchase order threshold, because that's been in place for 25-plus years, so. And most of our pricing, frankly, when we purchase anything, even small purchases, we always seek to get government pricing or state contract pricing, so we go with the lowest price anyway. So I request approval of these revisions to the purchasing policy.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any no discussion? I'm sorry. Your recommendation. Should pass this or not?
Call for vote.
Call for vote. All right. Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. Those in favor?
All in favor.
All in favor, yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They're not, they passed, thank you. Item C, fiscal year 2018 budget amendment, Elizabeth.
Sure. So this is in addition. To our FY '18 budget, because it wasn't, it's a brand-new award, a technical services contract with Ameren. This is for a new Garden Hills Energy Efficiency Initiative. This initiative was, is done in collaboration with City of Champaign staff, and it's an exciting initiative, because this is a targeted neighborhood for the Healthy Beginnings Initiative at Carl, lots of what we do with Head Start and the school district, and now this energy efficiency. So this 210,000 will allow us to identify a minimum of 250 residences in Garden Hills through door-to-door canvassing. We're going to use a lot of interns to do a lot of this work, educate residents about energy efficiency plans, distribute enhancements, which can include LED light bulbs, power strips, a number of things. We're also going to do energy efficiency workshops in the neighborhood, so we're going to conduct four of those workshops, again, to provide that continuing education to residents about what they can do to improve energy efficiency. We're also going to develop a scope of work and oversee assessments and retrofits for about 40 to 60 homes. And finally, we're going to do some LED front yard lighting with retrofits. The first phase would be to address the lack of street lighting and therefore the safety and violence in that neighborhood, see what we can do there to install and distribute LED porch lights, but then the second phase will likely include residential pole lights because of the streetscape work that the city's doing there. So it's, there'll be a number of phases, and so we'll include this in the FY '19 budget as well. But we're very excited about this new initiative, so I request approval of the amendment.
Yeah, I'm really excited.
Very good. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion before you vote? Diane? Diane.
Just had a question. How does a neighborhood qualify for this sort of retrofit? Whether the Lutzor address that future years?
So this initiative is part of the Future Energy Jobs Act that was passed, I think, a couple of years ago, and Ameren's approach is to try and do more community-based work. I would say that this is more of a pilot initiative. Matter of fact, initially, when we had written the proposal, we were going to do it in Rantoul, but unfortunately, Ameren does not provide services in Rantoul. And so we picked Garden Hills for the reasons that were provided, but that's not to say that we will be able to expand into other neighborhoods that have, you know, either similar needs or other needs. So it's more of a pilot at this point.
Yes, sir.
I assume that we're all coordinating, because City of Champaign is basically doing the same thing with Ameren. We, so we are working particularly on the porch lights and yard lights portion of this. I was excited to see the possibility of some pole lights, but the thing that we've been really careful about is we're about to do, you know, $100 million, maybe not quite that much, but, you know, at least $25 million worth of infrastructure with drainage and sidewalks and light poles. So you don't want to put stuff where we're going to tear it out in the next few years, and so we'll need to all work together, but.
We actually have been coordinating everything with Carrie's division.
Yeah.
With her in the lead. So this initiative, I think, is a.
Great collaboration with the City of Champaign, but we are working with the city on not only the whole initiative, but identifying areas where we're going to begin to work.
So I was just going to say that it's a little bit harder to evaluate the effectiveness of some of the smaller items that the grant is proposing to do, distributing power cords and things like that. It's hard to know kind of how people really use them in their homes, but I think the porch light and the street light aspect is going to be really significant, the safety valve for the neighborhood, and I really appreciate hearing about it. Thank you. Are there any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? They're being not, it passed. Item D is the 2018-2019 HSEHS continuing funding, and that's Brandy.
When Brandy's absent, she's out sick today. This represents our continued fifth year of a five-year non-competitive federal funding for our Head Start and early Head Start grants. So the total here, which the federal portion is 5.3 million, represents a 2.3%, which is the COLA increase from this year to last year, and the non-federal match, which is primarily in kind of 1.3, for a total of 6.655. And we are working hard to develop the details of this budget as the next month occurs, because this is due December 1st at the federal regional office. But there's nothing unusual. The staffing and the structure are going to be pretty much the same, because there's not that much additional money. The 2.3 will just allow us to, you know, make those increases in the staffing and the salaries, as well as the fringe benefits.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Next one's item A, a self-assessment report. Elizabeth, do you have that one also?
And in Brandy's absence, she's recommending approval of the self-assessment. The self-assessment is required under the federal program performance standards, where we have to conduct pretty formalized self-assessment to see where we are, to make sure that we've addressed any deficiencies, any areas of weaknesses, any areas where there are opportunities to improve. The staff did a very good job in terms of continuous improvement for 2018-19, so she's recommending approval of this report.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, passed. Item F is the adoption resolution. Okay, let me finish this one, and do the next one. Adoption resolution of Bike Moves Illinois Phase II Grant Application. Rita?
Good morning. You have in your packet a resolution that is required by IDOT's Office of Intermodal Project Implementation. We are submitting a grant application to them to continue with Phase II of the Bike Move app that we developed back in 2015, between 2015 and 2017. As part of any application to IDOT, we need to submit a resolution from the RPC Board to allow us to submit the application and receive the funding in the future if we are awarded the grant. And I also include in the packet this couple services for the project that we are submitting.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry?
I'll see you doing it.
All right.
Move approved.
All right, is there a second?
Yeah, sure, I'll do the second.
All right, super. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
In the past, we have received and I provided on the scope of services that is there, the detail of all the data that we have collected so far. We have 75 cyclists submitted data for 750 trips approximately, for approximately 1,600 miles of trips. And we have a website where we show all the data collected and mapped it.
What's the time period for that?
For the new one?
No, the previous.
The previous one, we developed the app, finished the app in 2017, then in a year period, we connected this data. Uh huh.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Mr. Pius, it's all yours.
Our next item is revisions to recruitment and hiring policy. Ms. Kruger.
Recruitment and hiring policy is being revised to specifically identify gender identity and non-conforming gender identification as protected classes for which the agency will not discriminate during recruitment and hiring processes. This addition is being added as the obvious, and I would appreciate requesting your approval for the modification to the policy.
Motion to approve the policy revision. Moved by Ms. Finan. You moving it? Or you have a question? Okay. Second by Mrs. Marlin. Questions? Any not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, let's move on to reports. Somebody gave the Head Start, early Head Start report by Brandy, is that just for our information?
Brandy's absence, I think she's included a number of reports here, enrollment attendance, meal counts, family support, financials, performance indicators, and a listing of materials that have been added to the Office of Head Start's website in August and the August meeting minutes, and a request that you approve and place on file.
Such a motion. Moved by Ms. Wiltshire. Second by, by Mr. Hilton. Further discussion or questions? See none all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Rural Gas Division Updates, Ms. Murphy.
So we continue to progress on our major repair and maintenance projects at our three centers, Rantoul, Savoy, and Urbana. Contractor work, according to the bid documents, needs to be completed by the closeout of our preschool for all grant initiative, which was one-time funding, and we're hoping that that will be completed by the closeout date of November 30th, '18. So we've, it's been challenging work because of the accelerated timeline, but I think we're going to meet this deadline, so we're pleased about that, and hopefully these repairs will enhance each of the centers for our leased facilities. We're working on staff performance reviews and development of a staffing structure and a pay plan for 2019. Compensation plan will be submitted to the commissioners at the next meeting in November as part of the final approval of the budget. And finally, we're working on a grant application for a statewide workforce innovation program that's focused on the integration of economic development and workforce development. This is a new initiative. This is kind of a pilot project, but we look forward to submitting a creative proposal. This would be two-year funding, probably in the amount of half a million dollars, in order to develop a business-driven workforce development system. We're also working with the state and Pius and the county board chairs. The Department of Labor cited the state of Illinois, because there are statutory requirements that the workforce development areas be contiguous to the economic development areas, and in that regard, Douglas County may become the fifth county in our four-county local workforce area, and that decision will be made by the respective county board chairs for implementation on July 1st of '19. So, and that's it.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Any questions for her about anything? Let's go with Ms. Avery.
Last month's meeting, just as I was coming, my nephew was rushed to the emergency room, but he's doing okay now. But in terms of economic development, I've been wanting to ask this question in the score. We are looking to obtain a grant for economic development, and I hear that you're bringing, that Douglas County may be coming in on the Tribe, the Qua, I guess it's Qua County, Economic Development Board. How many counties do we have currently now that's involved with the?
For workforce, we have four. So that's Champaign, Ford, Piatt, and Iroquois County.
And again, this is a federal statutory requirement, so the state is out of compliance, and they were cited in monitoring review. Right now Douglas County is in with local workforce area 23, which is located in Aragon. So that process is a transition process, but the Douglas County folks and Pius attended the meeting at the state level, seem very interested in joining with us, as many of their employees come up here for employment, and there's a linkage here, so.
But I know that you haven't kept your part. But I just want to bring my question more closer to home in terms of economic development. I'm wondering if regional planning has had any involvement in the economic development of the Bristol redevelopment neighborhood, and if there is any plans for, and I'm sorry, I missed your report, to become involved at some level of that redevelopment project. I think it's an important project, and we're very proud that the city is redeveloping that area, but in terms of economic development, I, my question would be, is there any plans from regional planning to be a part of that development? And how can we be a part of that development?
At this time, I haven't participated on the redevelopment of the Bristol area. It's a City of Champaign planning project. I'm aware of what is going on, but I haven't been part of any discussions regarding the redevelopment of that area. However, we have been working with the park district about the portion related to the Martin Center, but not the residential area.
We did have some involvement in the initial stages of Bristol Place, particularly in relocating the residents that were there. Some of our staff here in the No Limits program were instrumental in working with the families that were moving from that area. We are working with the city on another initiative in Garden Hills related to energy efficiency, but I wouldn't say that the door is closed for regional planning to be involved in any, whether it's economic development or any other services that we provide here. For instance, a few weeks ago, I met with the, and I don't remember what the acronym stands for, but it's LISC, and they want our organization to be set up as a financial opportunity center where we can work with households and families to help them really attain self-sufficiency by focusing a lot on their, you know, whether it's debt, credit rating, trying to get all those resolved so that they can be more participatory in our economy. So I would say that there would certainly be a role for RPC. We just have to fully flesh that out with the city and figure out what our role would be.
Mr. Roberts, do you have a question?
Well, I was just trying to clarify in my mind whether this is, whether the workforce activity was aimed at the adults, or was it also a youth-oriented program? For encouraging.
They have both, they have both programs. It says primarily adult, but they do have youth, who are still protected during the summer.
It would actually be all the service, excuse me, the services that we currently provide under workforce in the three, four-county area, so it would extend into the five-county area, youth, adults, and dislocated workers. It's adding an additional county into the coverage area.
I want to point out that the workforce area for 23 is like 14 counties, so losing one, so it's not a huge impact on them since they have so many counties. Okay, let's move on to Human Resources Director, Ms. Kruger. Couple of reports.
No reports were included in your packet for review. The reports reflect new hires, transfers, and exits for the period of September 21st through October 17th. I'm asking for your approval of those reports. Additional items that are happening in the Human Resources Department include, we have successfully hired approximately 60 employees since May. I am happy to report that we are very close to being fully staffed. We are still seeking to hire teachers for our early childhood program and career planners for the expansion of the Workforce Investment Opportunity Act program. As of the last reporting period, the agency's turnover.
... recruitment interview, onboarding, and training process. Other initiatives that the Human Resources Department is working on includes preparation for estate equal opportunity monitoring and compliance monitoring visit of the Workforce Investment Opportunity Act program, and DCFS will be conducting their annual audit of the. In two weeks. The DCFS audit is related to the Head Start program, which means we're going to come through and look at 150 various documents required the Head Start employees. Additionally, we are also in the process of attaining quotes for an employee assistance program that will provide tools to assist employees with social and emotional issues that occur from time to time during one's career path. An EAP program is an economic tool that will assist supervisors with employee behaviors that spill over into the workplace, and Human Resources with the ability to refer employees with severe issues to trained professionals that can assist with emotional guidance. So we are seeking those quotes in conjunction with our Blue Cross Blue Shield health insurance plan, and I am hopeful to get a reasonable quote soon. plan, and I am hopeful to get a reasonable quote soon. This is the time of year, as Betty mentioned, we are working on performance reviews and are beginning to complete all non-bargaining unit employees, and efforts to reflect on the employee and team accomplishments, opportunities for growth, and set measurable objectives and goals for next year. All right, now this is the important stuff. On November 6th, RPC will celebrate Thanksgiving. You're all, all very welcome to come see us. I know, right? We've done this before, it's, it's a great day to celebrate Thanksgiving. And the Social Committee will coordinate a luncheon and thank employees for their commitment contributions to the organizational goals. And finally, we are also working on an all-agency employee recognition event, and we're in the early stages of that, which will be held in April of 2019. Be happy to address any questions.
Can I have a motion to accept place on file first? Moved by Ms. McGuire, second by Ms. Marlin, all in favor? Sorry, discussion, Mayor Marlin.
I have a question. What's the total employee count now at RPC? Same size as the city of Urbana.
And over the summer, we add approximately 200 with the summer youth program, so it's a lot to handle, but we're happy to do it and do our very best in every facet of particularly Human Resources and Operations.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next up is Ms. Benson, Community Services.
Good morning. I wanted to tell you about a few things going on in our division. There's lots going on, but I can't cover all of it. One of the big things that we have currently before us is preparing a response to a competitive application for our individual services coordination program. It's a program that's been with the Regional Planning Commission for over 20 years, may get as close to 30 years, I'm not sure. So, that program works with individuals that have intellectual developmental disabilities. It is currently covering a three-county area, and there's 10 staff covering that, those three counties and providing those services. In this competitive application, the state is actually decreasing the coverage, or the number of individual, or the agencies that are providing these services, and there's going to be 12 areas instead of 17. So, we would, if, if awarded this opportunity as we compete for it, we would expand from three counties to 13 counties, going as far up to LaSalle County, over near Peoria, including Vermillion County, and down into Logan County, I believe, is it Logan? Logan County, I believe. It would be at least a $2 million venture. We're currently at around a little over a half million. So, that's a, a big undertaking that we have right now. So, we're preparing a competitive application in hopes to expand our services and maintain the current services that we have. So, the counties that we currently cover are inclusive in this 13-county area, so to continue what we're doing, we have no choice but to expand. So, that's one big project that we have before us. I also wanted to, sorry, sorry.
Push it goes on. It's probably, we should bring it to your attention, though, that the process that the state has engaged in to solicit proposals from either existing providers or from new providers is being challenged by some of the existing grantees, just in terms of the way it's been written and structured. Doesn't seem to be a lot of transparency in their process, and so, there is an organization based out of Springfield that sort of functions as the advocacy arm for the grantees that receive this funding, to try and either engage our elected officials, to reach out to the administration. We're not saying that we don't want to compete for the funding, but we want to make sure that the process itself is not only transparent, but that the way it's, it's structured, that it's a little bit better than what has happened. It seems on the surface that perhaps the decisions that have been made on this program have been done internally within the department at which the funding flows through. So, we are, actually are waiting today to receive some word from Springfield as to what our course of action should be, should we either engage our board or our local elected officials to reach out to the state because of the way this has been structured. So, I just wanted to give you a heads up that while we are still preparing our response to the RFP, there's some controversy associated with this particular program.
Thank you, Delitzo. Also centralized intake for homeless. Homelessness obviously becomes a more paramount issue as it gets colder, and so you're hearing more in the community about homelessness. So, we've been doing the centralized intake for homeless screenings in the county for a little over a year. We started that, I think in April of 2016, maybe. So, we've had a good amount of time to evaluate process. So, we're actually tweaking our process a little bit and improving it, we believe. So, what I've done is I put a flyer back here that just talks about the centralized intake for homeless. We've had a line where people call and we screen. What we're moving to, and we'd set up appointments, and to increase efficiency, we've created four walk-in locations, so people can walk in immediately rather than have appointments that they don't show, and then it's back and forth in scheduling appointments. So, we believe this will increase efficiencies. So, there are now four walk-in locations that are provided throughout the community, and I've, I've put a flyer back in the back that you can have to take with you. I also wanted to let everyone know, we have a link on our website, and we can share that link with you to put on your website. So, if you have constituents, individuals in the community that are interested in knowing how to access the services, they can get that information directly from your websites or our websites. Essentially, that link would link them into our website that has the information. And then, an exciting partnership that I think I've mentioned before, we've been doing a partnership through workforce with the City of Champagne with the Fire Department, and we actually have a little bit of data related to the outcome of that pilot. It was a pilot to help them recruit for their Adult Explorers Pilot Initiative, and so in 2016, they had a total minority applicants for that pilot of around 9.4 percent, and then this initiative in 2018, it's up to 19.5 percent. And so, it's been a wonderful partnership, and we hope that we will continue that.
On the homeless issue, I, I know agencies are. RPC now the first point of contact that we should use in order to help an individual?
So, with regard to accessing housing services, not necessarily emergency shelter, because the continuum of care requires continuums to have a coordinated entry point. Centralized intake works for that. So, that creates a priority that assists them in connecting to housing. So, if an individual needs immediate shelter at midnight, they would still go to the seasonal shelters in the process that exists, but they definitely should be contacting the court, the centralized intake, because that will then get them into a prioritization for resources as they become available. So, it is definitely a key point, but if someone's in. Exactly. For all the housing across the continuum, yes. Minus emergency shelter.
Any other questions? Ms. Avery.
I did want to ask you a question about our reentry. I know that you, your department has applied for funding for reentry programs. Just wondering if you were working closely with.
First followers?
Yes. Thank you. First followers. My mind isn't following along with my brain.
Yes, we are. We have a workforce, the workforce program, actually First Followers is one of our youth subcontracts, and then we also, what you're referencing is we have a young adult reentry program grant that we've received that coincides with our workforce. Enforced Followers is, is one of our partners in that, that initiative.
And Dream, that's getting the NWA CP award, I believe. Yeah, they're, they're the other partner in the program.
Further discussion, further discussion. Are you done with your report? Okay, thank you, and next up is Rita.
Good morning again. I wasn't here at the last RPC board meeting, but I want to announce that we submitted back in the spring of this year, eight different grant applications through IDOT. Out of the eight, we received six applications, which is great. And one of the ones that we didn't receive, it was recommended to be submitted through the Illinois Center for Transportation as a grant research, and I just did that about a month ago. Then, at this time, we are in the process of working with IDOT on getting the intergovernmental agreement signed, and the scope of services approved and all that, and we'll start working on these grants probably at the beginning of next year, January of next year. That's the idea. On other topic, the consumer electronic recycling occurred last Saturday, October 13. We had 1,649 people register online. Out of that amount, 80% of them showed up that day, and we collected about 163 tons of electronics that day. That, to put it in perspective, is about ASMI's with all that stuff in there. The event went well, no complaints, a lot of praises for the staff, the staff working on that event. And the staff is composed of people from the different agencies of RPC. At this time, we are continuing working on the update of the Long Range Transportation Plan. As required, we are developing the Long Range Transportation Plan 2045. Actually, this week, we had a meeting of the steering committee, we discussed with them the existing conditions, and we have all the information regarding existing conditions posted on the website, because the document will be online all the time. And we are wrapping up the public involvement for the Long Range Transportation Plan. Between June and October, the staff attended 17 different events in the community. Out of the 17 different events, we collected 757 comments on the map that we developed here in-house for people to provide comments. And we also collected about 120 comments, regional comments, that are applicable to different areas. Then, we are going through the process of filtering them and sending them to the different agencies. And we also received over 700 survey responses regarding several questions that we asked the community. With that information, we are developing the need analysis for our community and developing the three future priorities for our community. Based on the input received so far, the top three priorities for our community are walking and biking for health, environment, and transportation accessibility for all residents. One thing that we noticed from the public input that we collected is that we are a little bit low in input from the Champagne and Savoy residents. A huge disparity on data collected or comments collected from women and men. Women are more willing to talk than men. And, and we are also a little bit low on Asian residents. Then, our next public input will be next spring, then we are looking at targeting those areas where we have low public input from those areas, and then we'll try to get that addressed. Staff has been working on updating the QWAT modeling suite to start scenario planning. Then, we'll be starting that, that process of developing scenarios for the future of Champagne-Urbana Transportation System, probably in November. We were asking for volunteers from the steering committee to participate in this group, and we'll be then using our modeling suite to test those scenarios. That's LRTP. Two more topics. Safe route to a school grants. The safe route to a school grants are due in November. At this time, we are working with the Urbana Park District to submit a grant application to connect Thomas Payne School to Colorado Avenue using a cherry use pass through the Lomond Park. We are also working with the Champagne Park District on a grant application to connect Franklin Academy to Elm Street through the Spalding Park using a cherry use pass. And we are also working with the Thomas Boro School District and the Village of Thomas Boro on providing sidewalks around the school to connect residents of the neighborhood to the school through sidewalks. And we are working with those three agencies, and also aware that Tolono is putting a grant application together, but we are not working with them. We just learned about it. And lastly, I know that we have talked about traffic safety in Champagne-Urbana and the county for a long time. We have had an increase in fatalities in the year 2016, and we are concerned about it. Then, we are having safety committee meetings more regularly now, and actually, we had a safety committee meeting yesterday. There was, I'm pleased to say that there was representation from enforcement and also from the different agencies, planning and engineering. We couldn't get representation from the hospitals regarding emergency services, and usually Judge Ford sits at those meetings, and he couldn't attend yesterday. But we are in the process of developing two different safety plans, one for the rural areas and one for the urban area, and we have the committee working on it. Yesterday, we discussed different strategies that we can use to address the problems, and we already identified emphasis areas that we'll be targeting in our safety plan. And then, we will continue to monitor safety in our community, and we'll have regular meetings of this group to try to address those safety concerns and apply for grants and all that. Any questions?
Ms. Avery.
I mean, is there, Rita, is there a way that citizens who may not make the public hearings can go online and provide suggestions?
Yes, there, we have a website where they can provide comments. But just for you to be aware, when we located different places that we went for public involvement, we target those areas that are included in our title seats. We went through our title seats and identified low-income areas, areas with a high proportion of minority population. We target areas where we know that a high percentage of the population are non-native speakers, and we have staff that is able to speak in many different languages. Then, we, the, the, the events that we attended were located at those locations, and we have a good representation from those groups. At this time, we have lower representation from Champagne and Savoy at large, and men and Asians, but we have a good representation of Latinos, African-Americans, low-income population, and all that. But I can certainly know with the link.
Okay, good, because I'd like to get that out, because I'd like to hear more voices on, from, you know, I'd like, I just shared with the mayor that, you know, at some point, I would love it if we could have a plan that looked at exchange off of I-74, either on Mattis Avenue or Duncan, because it becomes very, I think the traffic patterns in terms of getting off on 74, when you're trying to come to Southwest Champagne, having to get off on Prospect Avenue, that's probably the last exit that you can get off of on 74, and then have to travel back down either the Frontage Roads or whatever just to get to Mattis Avenue. It's, it becomes a nightmare at times. And so, it would be so nice to study the traffic, to be able to even consider an exchange off of Mattis Avenue or Duncan Road. I think with Duncan, that would be, I think, very much more efficient for the traffic patterns and people getting to and from that part of our city. So, I'm just wanting to know if there was places that people can go, because I know I'm not the only one that feels that there needs to just be something, right? Another exit off of 74 somewhere in Champagne, in that. Another exit off of 74 somewhere in Champaign, in that part of town where it's growing further to the west, and there just needs to be another exit off of 74 that takes us into that part of our city.
There, fine.
I would disagree with that. I would also say that the I-57, 74 interchange has been rated one of the most dangerous exchanges, and we have been working for 15 years, 20 years, to get that done. I mean, it's kind of slowly, little pieces of it get funded. It took us more than 20 years to get the Curtisworth interchange.
I know.
So, as we, I, that's not to say we shouldn't do this, it's that we have to start thinking about it now, because it may be 20 or 25 years before people...
Don't like gray kids to be able to join.
Yeah, your gray kids will be able to get off there. And I don't know about distance from other, you know, exchanges and how all of that works, but I, you know, I think beginning to look at that is important, because it takes forever. But from my perspective, I-74, 57, which already exists and is incredibly dangerous, the rebuild of that would take priority for me.
Mr. McGuire.
I would agree with that, and obviously, safety of 74 all the way across, which a lot of people from St. Joe and other areas are traveling on rural roads to get into Champaign now, rather than taking 74 from Danville or St. Joe or Mohammed, which I don't know what progress is with the stop signs that we put in. And then, as I mentioned to you, when I was talking to people in Savoy, First Street, which I don't know if that's the grant we didn't receive, and the one you're reapplying for, but they also talked about bike paths and running all the way down First Street from Champaign to the Airport Road, I guess is what it's called for those people there, because I can't get on 45 to do that. So, but that whole area is an issue, and maybe you're working on that now, but...
Thomas.
If we're going to talk about overall road improvements, I'd also like to point out that a number of years ago, the suggestion was made by IDOT to consider making I-74 six lanes through Champaign-Urbana, as it has been done in Bloomington-Normal. And unfortunately, we did not have support from some legislators on that. But that would help with safety issues and congestion, probably more than working on any individual exchange. It would be a very large project, and again, we may be looking at something that would be a number of years or decades down the road at this point. But in terms of safety issues and congestion, with the amount of traffic that's handled, there's no difference between the traffic handled in Champaign-Urbana and Bloomington-Normal. In fact, it may be higher in Bloomington-Normal if you did a traffic count.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? CEO, management report. Delitzo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a few items for informational purposes, but I'll begin with probably what Mayor Marlin was alluding to, and that is the growth that the organization has been going through the last few months. And I think that has necessitated for our leadership team to begin to think about ensuring that not only we have space, and that's one thing that we are quickly running out of, is adequate space to accommodate any new staff that we are bringing on or recruiting for some of the new initiatives that RPC has embarked upon. But the other is to make sure that our internal processes, the structure that we have, the systems that we use to operate the organization, that are, those are in alignment with what we're trying to accomplish as an organization. So, I know that we're beginning to have those conversations perhaps next week, so that as we continue to grow, we don't want to, we don't want to bring on more resources, but yet not pay attention to the critical things that we need to have in place to ensure that we operate effectively. So, that's something that is constantly on our minds, and we want to ensure that the programs that we operate will continue to be very effective. On the space thing, I think I reported this at the last meeting, we're still reviewing and looking at how we can accommodate our growth in our existing space, but also trying to brainstorm about, could there be other ways in which, particularly if we're working with interns or temporary staff, you know, they don't necessarily have to work here physically, maybe there may be some other ways that we can accommodate them and still be able to accomplish the tasks that they're provided. Last month, I attended the National Community Action Conference in Denver, and I had the opportunity to spend one-on-one time, at least an hour, with the Director of the Office of Community Services, and that is a presidential appointee. His office oversees the Community Services Block Grant, that is in Lisa Benson's division, as well as our LAHE program. But he's also in charge of the Temporary Assistance for Needed Families, and that's about a $15 billion program nationally. And so, he's someone that I had worked with before. He was an appointee under Bush, 43, but he has been reappointed by this administration. And so, I look forward to engaging with him on some of the initiatives that we're pursuing here in Champaign. I also did have the opportunity to meet with the Director of the Office of Head Start. Her name is Dr. Bergeron. She comes from the education sector, and so, one of the things I do want to do is to invite her to attend our meeting in April, so that our staff will have an opportunity to meet the individual that has been appointed by the President to oversee the Head Start program in the country. I also did have the opportunity last month, maybe unfortunately, to be elected as the to be elected as the Chair of the Community Action Association in Illinois, as well as the Vice Chair of the Community Action Association nationally. I continue to serve on the Poverty Commission. That is an appointment that was made by Leader Durkin in the House. And I also continue to serve on the African-American Employment Commission, which is an appointment by Governor Rauner, to work with the various state agencies to ensure that African-Americans are having a fair shake in terms of getting employment within state agencies in Illinois. Very excited about the energy efficiency initiatives, some of which we discussed earlier in the meeting today. I'm very excited about increasing our portfolio in the area of energy efficiency. I think at the last meeting, I reported that this is indeed a growing field. It's about a $7 billion field nationally, and we are just getting to be a part of it. So, it's, you know, growing our weatherization program, the gardeners initiatives that we talked about. We are also in negotiations with Nicor, which is the gas company that provides services, particularly in the Ran Toole, Latlo area. They want us to work with them in providing some energy efficiency work there. Very excited to engage our planning and community development and economic development division. They're working with AMRIN to help them do not only planning, but tracking indicators of some of their energy efficiency initiatives. And so, this is an exciting, I think, opportunity for our organization to be involved in that. As a result, I think next week, I'm going to be presenting at a conference in Springfield, which will be attended by the Illinois Commerce Commission Commissioners, as well as some of the utilities and regulators on the role that we have been playing, not only here at RPC, but some of the work that we have done statewide in getting some of this energy efficiency work underway. In my first few months, when I met with some of you, you had expressed the interest in wanting to ensure that RPC does become the central depository for data for our community. And I've been working with Rita and her team to develop a community data portal that will be linked to many of your organizations. So, we're not necessarily replacing anyone's website or anyone's data, but if individuals want to have a centralized location to find data, they can actually access your websites through our data portal. So, it's still in the works. We had planned to do a demo today, but we probably will plan to do that next month. So, that's something that is in response to, I think, some of the feedback that I did receive when I initially started here. So, hopefully, down the road, there will be one central location that anybody wants to find, whatever type of data that is related to our community, they'll be able to access it through the data portal that we are developing. Finally, we are in the process of putting together an annual report for the Regional Planning Commission. My understanding is that this used to be the practice in the past, so we are resurrecting that practice, and we hope to have an annual report that will be presented to the commissioners probably at our, do we do it in January? At our January meeting. And so, it'll be our first stab at it. I'm sure it'll be a work in progress, but we do so much here that it's kind of hard to try and encapsulate that into an annual report, but we'll do our best to, you know, highlight the work that we're doing on behalf of our community. I think that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions for Delitzo? Sorry? We can't really set quick and follow verbal ones though. Okay. Pardon? Doesn't make any sense though. Just for the ones that are physically, I agree. Okay, any other business? Mr. McGuire.
Hello, Rod. We get a lot of response from the community for the lights and sign and the work that they did to help make that intersection safer for the community in Marin de Bruges. Appreciate her for that and folks.
Any else? Ms. Avery.
I just, your new appointments, I think those are wonderful accomplishments, and we're proud of you.
More work.
But I take it.
Okay, well, thank Chuck for starting the meeting off without me, since I wasn't here. With that, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Can I do two announcements?
Oh, no, go ahead.
Just wanted to remind folks that today is the retirement reception for Public Works Director Bill Gray, so you probably won't have an invitation, but just please stop by between 4:00 and 6:00 at the Civic Center. And also, I wanted to let you know that as of November 19th, our new Grants Manager in the City of Urbana will be Sheila Dodd, so she's coming to us from Habitat for Humanity and brings some wealth of experience in the field.
And the City of Champaign.
And the City of Champaign. So, we're very pleased that she'll be joining our staff.
It's nice to see people going from Champaign-Urbana and otherwise they'll be around too. Okay. Yeah, go ahead, please.
I'd also like to remind this body that today is Rick Snyder's last day in Ran Toole. Rick has done an excellent job, not only for the county, but also for Ran Toole. So, if you have his phone number, please call him and tell him goodbye. He says goodbye is not in his vocabulary, but we're not going to see him as often as we have in the past, and I'm sure he'd appreciate hearing from this body. Thank you.
All right, with that, we're adjourned. Thank you.